For Andrea, Tom, and Todd.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Directors in the Algonquin Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
I do.
We need to call for nominations for Board President. I did give you guys little ballots. You don't have to use those if you don't want to. I just did it in case you.
I'd like to make a recommendation for Office of President as Rodney Davis.
I'll second that. Do you second?
I think so.
Are there any? Yes. Are there any other nominations?
I made a nomination to cease. I will make motion to cease nominations. Do you want to do by hand, by voice, by ballot? It's up to you. Voice.
Voice.
All those in favor of Rodney Davis as President, say aye.
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 Nay? Rodney is for President and I will give you the vote of office.
Okay. No?
No.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to read it again.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Board President of the Algonquin Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do. Thank you all. I appreciate the confidence. Want me to take over now?
Yes.
Looking for the Office of Vice Presidency, we would need a nomination from the floor for that also.
For those that aren't? I was going to ask you, for those that aren't in attendance, did any, has anybody expressed interest? Anybody?
I think Jay would, would continue if, if nominated, yes.
He expressed that he couldn't be here tonight.
With that in mind, I would recommend a nominee, Jay, as our Vice President.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Andrea, thanks Tom. We have a motion and a second. Need motion for nominations to cease.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, as we did for the Office of Presidency, the Office of Vice Presidency will just take a vote, verbal vote, so. All in favor of Jay Limbaugh as Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jay Limbaugh, elected Vice President.
I'll give him the vote.
Okay. All right, now we'll kind of get into our regular portion of our meeting, if we'd like to. I'd like to start again, like we usually do with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Lot going on tonight with stuff out of town and concert here and the PAC. There's a lot of activity going around, so. But as we go through our agenda tonight, please remember our mission and our vision as we, we go to make decisions for, for our district, so just keep that in mind. As we go to approve the agenda, before we would get into that, we did have a closed session as H. We would probably look to strike that tonight, move that to January, due to the fact that we do have three board members actively watching their kids for, do things throughout the district and away from the district, so.
So at that time, do we need to make motion to amend the agenda?
Yes. We'll approve the agenda with the amendment that closed session will happen in January. Somebody?
Oh, do you want to go right now?
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, then to approve the agenda with the closed session moving to January. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. No early hearing of delegates. We'll move to communications to the board, I believe, at this point. Joe?
Yep, and you guys last week were sent the financial health analysis from Lisa. She's prepared that analysis for the district. It's a thorough report of the district's financial health using data concluding with FY 23. So the CAR, the Certified Manual Report that Lisa does for the Department of Education, Department of Management, is what compiles all this information, and then she put it into that report and that analysis for us, so. You know, you guys did receive it. Do you have any time to ask for questions you may have? It's, it's very, very thorough, very depth, a lot of information there, some of the same terminology we, we use throughout the year, specifically with our unspent balance, solvency, some of those, but it goes beyond that as well and has a lot of information to show the, the financial health of our district, which is in, in good shape. So are, are there any questions from the health report for Lisa or I?
I like the graph part of it. I think that's helpful to kind of see. Some of them look striking, but they're not as striking as they look.
Yeah. And there is, there's a couple graphs in there that we got a downward line, not a trend, but a line, and that's simply because we spent more than our, we brought in, which we knew. We knew that was going to happen. We know it'll happen again this year, but we have a fund balance that allows us to do that, so. Although it doesn't look very good in the graph, it doesn't represent unhealthy finances for us, it's actually the opposite. We're very healthy with strong fund balances that allow us to spend those dollars at this time.
The first one is the biggest one, the first bullet there, and it's purely recording of past receivables and how we reorganized and, and how the state wanted me to report it. So it looks awful, but it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again for all the work on this. It's tremendous to have it. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lisa. All right, well now I see where I jumped ahead of myself. Thank you, Andrea. No wonder you wondered if I wanted it now approved. With all the way that started tonight, I got a little off.
No worries.
Off that, so we're good, but we have approved the agenda, so we will move on then to the consent items which you all received in your packet. Did anybody have any questions with those?
All the finances, they, they are routine for the month. You see our revenues are exceeding our expenditures. That will balance out. We do anticipate spending more than our, we received this year. Our ending balances, our insurance fund continues to run strong. Lisa and I met with Holmes Murphy, our insurance broker, last week to look at our, our usage over the past year. Our pre-renewal meeting is what it was. Our usage is up slightly, but our insurance fund is so strong that we don't think we would have to make any type of change in our benefits and our programming for next year, so. We also reviewed with them that balance, making sure we always have enough. We are, we well exceed what they would consider the most we would need in that, that fund at this time.
One question I had about the invoice. I saw a fairly substantial amount to a sound system deposit. Are we updating something?
That, yeah, that's a good one, Todd. We are updating the sound system in the high school gymnasium and the commons, and that is from the Lyle Benson estate.
Okay.
Those dollars we received for capital improvements are the dollars that are paying for that.
I did, the football field towards the end was really, is that something we can fix or?
Yeah, actually, I think it's, it's not anything that's fixed. Some settings and some stuff.
Okay, perfect.
All from, you know, the sound, all comes from the new video board. I know Amy had worked, there were some things that weren't set right, so probably it's just our use of it more than anything.
Okay.
Lot of cracking early on.
Yes, yeah. Well, good, I'm glad.
Analog instead of digital.
Commons needed an update there, so that's good.
Yeah, those both are very much needed. If you've ever attended a banquet or any type of presentation in the common sound is a, is an issue, and it's a big space that we use for those things, and it's important for us to use, so it's an update to that. Also an update on the video portion of that in the commons, which we use for some of those.
And when's that supposed to be installed?
They won't get to it till the, the summer.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing that, we need a motion and approve consent items.
Are there a motion to approve the consent items?
Thank you, Tom. Do you have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. Joe, we'll move into the superintendent's report then.
In the superintendent report, talk about the Iowa School Performance Profile. I think the first thing to talk about is why do we have the Iowa School Performance Profile? It's part of the federal law, the ESA Plan, that puts requirements in that every state has to have an accountability system, and the Iowa School Performance Profile is part of our overall accountability system. There's been other measures that have been used in the past. Oftentimes, those things were tied to maybe one test or one snapshot. I think that's where they've improved the federal plan and that there's a lot of different parts to the Iowa School Performance Profile. It weighs student participation on state assessments. It weighs academic achievement and proficiency on state assessments. It also weighs student growth, which is the biggest weight, not proficiency, but how much a child grows is actually the heaviest weighted category. Graduation rate is another area. Post-secondary readiness, the progress in achieving English language proficiency for a non-English language student, and then a student, student survey of safety and engagement called the conditions of learning. So I think it's a, it is a more comprehensive model that is, is helpful. If a school falls below 67% or the lowest 5% in graduation rate, they're considered comprehensive. If you are in the bottom 5% in any of the categories or subgroups, you're considered comprehensive, and that you would need comprehensive support from the Iowa Department of Education. Some of our highlights, I think, Algonquin High School has an overall rating of commendable, which is up from acceptable in 2022. Our middle school is commendable, same as 22. They were up from acceptable in 2021. Our elementaries are all commendable. All of our elementaries will always carry the same ranking. Whatever Lucille Wallace's ranking is, is what all three elementaries would be, and that's because they're the only elementary that takes the Iowa assessments grades third and fourth. Algonquin High School grew by over five points from 2022 to 2023, and they moved into commendable. Algonquin Middle School grew over three points, maintained commendable elementary, remained steady, maintained their commendable ranking. We are above the state average in our average school achievement in English language arts as a district. We are above the state average in our average school achievement in math. We are above the state average in the conditions of learning composite. That's the student survey that kind of measures your environment. We are above the state average in a graduation rate for four years and a graduation rate for five years. We are above the state average in growth in English language arts. Again, that's the heaviest weighted category. That and growth in mathematics, which we are also above the state average. We are above state average in the percent proficient in math. We are above the state average in percent proficient in English language art, arts. We are above the state average in post-secondary readiness index, career and technical education, also above the state average in progress towards English language proficiency. This is new. We have not had enough non-English speaking students for this to be a subgroup for us before, so it's the first time we've ever been measured in that area. A few more highlights. We grew over nine points in growth in English language arts as a district. That's tremendous. We grew over five points in conditions of learning. That student survey as a district. You know, we look at five different groups. We look at all students, free and reduced lunch students, IEP students, Hispanic students and white students. All five of those groups grew in proficiency in math and growth in English language arts. So you can take all of our kids in the groups on how we measure, all of those groups grew across the district in both English and math, and that's, you know, that's about as good as we can do. The students, the staff doing an awesome job in growing in all those areas. We present this, this data to you every year. Janie usually does that, so I just wanted to provide a kind of highlight overview of that this year and see if you have any questions about our Iowa School Performance Profile.
Question, how do they assess post-secondary readiness?
There's actually two ways. One is post-secondary readiness using ACT, participation in ACT scores. The other would be post-secondary readiness in career and technical education, the number of kids you have in those courses towards.
In, while in high school?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
Concentrators is what they're called.
Concentrators, yeah.
ACT concentrators. So there's actually like four sub-measures of the math.
Okay.
This process is so much better than the earlier processes we used, you know, 20 years ago, whatever it was. A much better process using multiple ways of assessment rather than one test.
You go back to around 2000, No Child Left Behind was the federal law that put high-stakes assessments in place for the first time, that with goals of every, every student, every school becoming proficient, using a percentile ranking in the state of Iowa, which I don't know if that could ever happen. You know, there was a lot of holes in that, that process. So you're right, Tom. So much better because we're not measuring proficiencies. We're measuring growth. We're measuring, you know, the whole of what we do at the school, and this isn't the whole. This isn't all that we do, but it takes its different accounts.
What made it frustrating was every state in the union could establish their own proficiency level. So some states started out 80%, and within six months realized we're in trouble, and some states started out at 10%. All of the union were what it was, completely inappropriate. We learned.
We did learn, and I think we've made it better. ESA is the best federal education plan we have right now until the next one, but I, I agree with you. It's a better method. What Iowa has done in their accountable process, I think, is, is good. It's good. It's good for kids.
Well, it's, it's been great reporting, so thanks to everyone for all their work. Looks like all we've done with curriculum and curriculum coordinators and everything in the past has started to really build.
I think you're right. You know, you guys have done things like approve, you know, the CKLA, which Mr. Sudol and Mrs. Schuch have presented on, I think, last month. You know, you see we have growth, tremendous growth in the LA as a district. All those things are contributing factors. You know, the changes we've made to continue to move those, and we still have lots of areas to.
Well, thank you. Good report. All right, no more questions. We'll move on to old business and look at a second reading of board policies.
Second reading, same, same policies as last month. The big one, again, these are all updates that come from the Iowa Association of School Board. Primer update, the first change is to policy 401, equal employment opportunities, an update to the paragraph involving background checks. There's also an update in the equal employment opportunity address and contact, which the law requires to be part of the policy. And the big one on the screen is, the second update is 5031, student conduct, which we didn't have. This, this is a new addition, including probation, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and suspension of special education students. And then the final one, the final addition is policy 5038, which is, that's the student conduct, the addition of those ones. This is 5038. This board policy did not exist. There was legislation that was passed last year that every school district had to have a model policy for discipline, and the Iowa Department of Education provided a model policy that this is based at, based on. The administration team and I used their model to develop 5038 for us, which what it, what it does is it's an escalating response by grade bands. The first grade band is the K2, so what's in level one, that would be the minimum of what we do, and so we would at least require parent or guardian notification. We would at least may include the following of a conference with the parents and student when appropriate, written parent consent, counseling, mental health, behavior intervention, detention, temporary removal from class. It's intended to escalate into level two and level three, which is what the law requires it to do. It then moves into the second grade span of grades three through five, six, eight, and then nine, 12.
Just happy to hear the administrators and everybody who's involved, since obviously there's the ones that'll have to.
And as, working with the administrators on this, I would say this, what we've created is very, very close to practice. We just had to create it, we had to make it a policy, and specifically a board policy, which is now required by law, to have this in place by January.
All right, as this being a second reading, we would need a motion for approval, a motion and a second, unless there's further questions or discussions.
Make a motion to approve the five, is the 500 series that?
No, it's randoms.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or one, one.
Approve as presented.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading in the board policies approved. All right, in the new business, as we start, we'll have a first reading.
First reading, and again, no action, just like Rodney said. Lisa has put this into a, you know, we continue to work our way through our board policies and making it more of a routine, consistent practice. She put together this chart, which makes it a lot easier, so we'll see these every, every month. So these are the first reads for December. You can see four and 500 series on there. All of these, if, if we have them, there was no change as our policy matched the Iowa Association of School Board, or it's a non, not required policy that we don't have. The only change would come in 5032 involving expulsion. This is first reading, so there's nothing that we need to do with it tonight.
On some of these, so like excused absences, request for remote learning, truancy, got policies in regards to that, right? Are they just in other places?
Yeah, almost all those things are handbook items for us.
Okay, handbook, there you go.
Handbook items, which, you know, I think philosophically, having things in the handbook is a good place. I think anytime things are closer to kids, it's good for kids. They're not required board policies, but they are handbook items for you, sure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Again, please take a chance to look them over, and next month we'll discuss them again and bring them back, so. All right, looking at the food pitch for the Fieldhouse project.
We had a fantastic turnout last Tuesday for bidding process for the Fieldhouse project. We had seven general contractors submit, submit bids. The bids were very competitive. I would recommend accepting the Kingland construction base bid of $12,216,000 and the six alternates, or a total of $12,814,000. Our cost estimate from our architects, when we started this, this process, was 13,200, so we went through, the process went great. We couldn't, we couldn't have asked for anything better to have the complete project with the alternates included for below that estimated price, so I would recommend accepting the reasonable and responsible low bid from Kingland Construction.
And so I looked through the alternates. There's some that are less expensive than Kingland in some of those.
Yep.
But Kingland just does the whole thing?
Yep.
Is that, okay, okay.
Now, and they do have, I included that in there. Within 24 hours of the bidding process, they have to provide us with their subcontractors.
Yep.
Which I included that, so you could see who some of those, some of those contractors are.
And, and Kingland's out of Forest City?
Correct.
Have they done, what other projects of this scale have they?
Atura, our architect has worked with them on the Osage Gym, which is a big one they've done recently. There's another large space in Mason City that they worked with them in the last couple of years, so certainly very comfortable with them and familiar with, with their work recently.
Make a motion to Kingland Construction.
Thank you. With the six alternatives, do we need to say?
I think just the Kingland Construction.
Second, the motion. Thank you, Tom. We have a motion and a second. For the Algonquin Fieldhouse. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kingland Construction's bid approved, accepted. All right, moving on then to dropout prevention application.
We approve this annually to fund our dropout prevention at-risk programs. There's a number of different staff member and programs that are funded through our dropout prevention dollars. It's a per pupil amount, kind of a few pieces to this formula. It's .046 times the district cost per pupil multiplied by your certified enrollment. Very valuable supplemental revenue source for us, over $350,000, allows us to fund programs that, you know, you just. Alternative vocation school, our at-risk programs at the high school, middle school, counselors, all are funded in part by dropout prevention and at-risk, so I do recommend the SBRC modified supplemental amount for the dropout prevention application.
Make a motion to approve that amount for the dropout prevention application?
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd. Do you have your motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kasuth County Conference Board appointment.
Every year, we, we appoint someone to the Kasuth County Board. I think there's an annual meeting, possibly two. Rodney, I think, have you?
I've done it. You had a packet ahead of time.
Andrew?
I was, and I wasn't able to make the meeting, so.
Yeah, you got a packet ahead of time and got the information about salaries to look through and.
So we just need to appoint one person to that part.
And who's interested?
Well, I feel like I let people down last year because I wasn't able to go to the one meeting.
So is there anybody else interested or?
Todd, what do you think?
I'd try it. I mean, it doesn't matter.
I think the main, one of the main reasons you work with county salaries.
Yes, it really, that's, and they just bring in a couple from schools, a couple school board members, a couple mayors, and then you all kind of at least discuss, you know, if you feel that the county compensation boards recommendations were, you know, adequate or right where they should be, so.
It'd be good.
Okay.
All right, somebody recommend Todd then?
I make a recommendation for Todd for the Kasuth County Conference Board.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I have a separate motion.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion and a second for Todd to be our appointee for the Kasuth County Conference Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Todd, thank you again.
Thanks, Todd.
For doing that.
We'll see.
You can take it back to me next year.
No, it's.
All right, appoint Algonquin Foundation member.
Yep, the Algonquin Community School Foundation is, is not a private foundation. In result, they must have a certain number of foundation board members appointed by, by you guys, the Board of Education, which is a supporting public organization. Mr. Jeff Knapp is a new Algonquin Community School Foundation member that needs to be appointed by the Algonquin Community School District Board of Directors.
I make a motion to approve Jeff Knapp for the foundation.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Yeah, he'll be an excellent member. Again, good background. That'll be a great one, so. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, SBRC application.
Yep, and we will need these as three separate motions, or two, two, because, and I'll explain that. that. The SBRC application allows us to receive on-time funding budget adjustments for certified enrollment increases. So for example, our certified enrollment this year is up 104 students, which, that's a, that's a really large increase. Those dollars we would typically get next year. The SBRC does allow you to have a one-time and on-time funding budget adjustment to get those dollars right now. In rural Iowa, we, this is, this typically doesn't carry a lot of, a lot of value to it because we don't have large certified enrollment increases. This year we do, and this increase brings almost $800,000 to us, of on-time dollars for this year. The second part is open enrollment out, which allows us to receive funding for students who were not on the fall 2022 count. Okay, so they weren't on our, our count last fall, and then we're open enrolled out in 2023. That's the middle one. We don't actually have any of those this year, so we don't have to approve that. The third part to the SBRC is the English language learners beyond five years. To fund those students beyond five years, when their limited English proficiency goes beyond that, otherwise funding would, would not be there. So this allows you to fund in addition to regular unwated funding. So the two applications we need to approve tonight are the increased enrollment and the limited English proficiency beyond five years.
You want them as separate motions?
We do, yes.
I would do, if you're ready.
Yeah.
I'll do a motion to request increased, increased enrollment through the SBRC application.
All right. We thank you, Todd, for your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we need a second one for English language learners beyond five years?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the SBRC application for ELL beyond five-year funding.
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to open enrollment.
We have seven open enrollments, applications that have all met the, have all met the guidelines for approval, and I recommend for their, would recommend to be approved.
I'm seeing six up there, mind this. There's our one there.
Six up there. You guys counted her.
Those six.
Oh, because you had five on there and I added two. There were four.
There were four.
Yeah, showing up four on our sheet here.
Yeah.
But on his general information sheet, it was five on your text. That's why I had to.
The six on the, the six on the screen are the six we need to approve.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the open enrollment.
Thanks, Andrew. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Next, I have a motion and a second. All right. Open enrollment. Request any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As we are not going into closed session, we'll move on then to personnel and look at approving contracts.
We have one contract, Ashton Collins, halftime teacher associate at CED.
Need a motion and approve contracts. Motion and a second.
I'll second.
Andrew and Todd, thank you, Rick. Both. All right. All in favor of approving contracts? Motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we, looking at resignations.
We have two resignations. The first is Marilyn Birdy, middle school teacher associate. Marilyn is retiring. We want to thank her for her years of service to the Algonquin Community School District. And our second resignation is Adam Orbin from the head musical sponsor who helped us out in filling that role for us this year.
The second one pending finding suitable replacement or?
No, he was, he was already that.
Okay, that's good.
So we need a motion to approve our resignations.
Do we motion to approve the resignations?
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignation's approved. All right. Well, I know we went through things, went through pretty.